All right, we're all set. All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to tonight's Planning Commission meeting. I'll ask Commissioner Newman to lead us all in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brenda. Can we have roll call, please?
Chair Baldino.
Yep.
Vice Chair Newman.
Present.
Commissioner Hushler.
I'm here.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Now is the time for public communications, opportunity to address the commission on things not on the agenda. I'll open public communication. Okay, seeing no one rushed the podium, we'll close public communication and move to consent calendar. Anything to be pulled? We have, looks like, four meeting minutes to approve? No, no one found any typos or anything fun?
No.
All right, I'll take a motion then.
I will move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, written communications. We do have this on the dais. Is this going to be explained with our one item? Okay. So then we'll move on to Agenda H5, new business, specific plan amendment related to setback encroachments, an amendment to the development standards of the corporate campus specific plan to allow balcony projections into the required front yard setbacks. Can we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. Don't have a screen up yet, but...
There's only three of us. You can just show the laptops.
I'm Assistant Planner Maria Baldinero.
There was also a system for doing that last time.
Oh, really?
And it involved a stick.
You've got to stand on a chair.
A magic stick.
Push a button.
There we go. This application is for a specific plan amendment. The project site is the corporate campus specific plan. It will encompass the entire project area. The proposed amendment is to the development standards of the corporate campus specific plan to allow balconies to project up to 10 feet into the required setbacks. Without the amendment, the developer would not be able to build two office buildings with balconies facing Campus Square West and Campus Drive. This exhibit shows where the balconies are located. The Campus Square West and Campus Drive are private streets and the setback that's required is 15 feet from the concrete curb. So, the request is primarily to encroach up to 10 feet into that, allowing and leaving five feet from the concrete curb to the front edge of the balcony. The request will allow four levels of balconies. They do stagger. We already allowed the bay windows and this is the side on Campus Drive and this is on Campus Square West. The proposed ordinance is categorically exempt from CEQA since the City Council certified the environmental impact report on January 2nd, 2002, for the development of the corporate campus specific plan and involves a minor revision to the development standards. Therefore, no further environmental review is required. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number 2049 recommending that the City Council adopt the proposed ordinance. At the dais, I dropped off a minor modification. We wanted to make the language to allow balconies on the front, side, and rear. So, Item 8 highlighted in yellow is being entered in the record as the modification to the ordinance. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Maria.
And the applicant is here with the EVA airline.
Great.
Airways, sorry.
And as I understand it, the development agreement already allowed patios in the setback, just not balconies.
That's correct. In 2013, they did modify the specific plan to allow patios and several other architectural...
And what's the depth of those patios?
The request that was made at that time was pretty open. And so primarily through the, even though the corporate campus specific plan doesn't state what the limit is, the development agreement does require that all the private streets in the corporate campus specific plan would have to provide at least a five-foot width sidewalk for ADA accessibility.
So, it's called a balcony if it's beyond or a patio if it's ground level?
That's correct.
And the patios would allow for the ADA compliance, yeah?
Correct.
The patios are already approved.
Exactly.
We're just adding balconies.
Exactly. And do the balconies extend beyond the patios?
The ones that I have seen, no.
And what, the way this is written, 10, beyond 10 feet, does not, does or does not extend beyond the patios?
Some of the patios are seven feet, some seven foot six, some eight foot six, and we wanted to give them flexibility. So, we went ahead and recommended a cap of 10 feet.
And it did read just front yard setbacks, but we're changing it so that it's side and back?
Right, because the side plan does show that it's on the side yards on both buildings. So, I thought it would be best to modify the language to address that.
And all the compliance of the patios with the balconies over won't extend beyond what the patio has already been approved for?
That's correct.
Are all the buildings currently right at that 15-foot setback? Is that where the edge of the building itself is?
The buildings themselves, yes.
Any further questions for staff? No? All right, I'll open up public communication. The first right, as always, will go to the applicant.
Good evening, Chairman Baldino, Planning Commissioners. We have another real brief presentation, just to kind of go over it. And frankly, when we were here back in 2013 asking for the encroachment for the patios, we probably should have wrote patios and balconies way back then. And we're actually going to show you a couple of slides as it relates to those other projects. Next one. So, this is really repetitive of what Maria just showed you. So, go again. Repetitive again, go again. One more. Trying to be quick. So, these were some balconies that will be representative of what you'll see on the building EVA is proposing. The left is Moose Toys and the right is Elavan. Actually, those are both Moose Toys. I'm sorry. The next page is Elavan. So, there's balconies at Elavan also. Next slide. So, just, so we have started construction, finally. It's been a long road, but we finally got there. And so, in fact, by the end of October, or October 10th, the south building, the 100,000 square building, will be topped out. So, the steel's being fabricated now and next week they'll start putting it up. And the east building, it'll be fully topped out about mid-November. So, the structures will be there real soon. And they're going to go extremely quickly. And then it'll slow down, obviously, with the skin and everything else. But you'll see an amazing progress from next week till the end of November.
Just in time for soccer season.
There you go. Well, we have pretty good fencing on. Deep Cars done a good job, I think, cleaning the streets and keeping it well.
And what of you of the soccer from the balconies?
That's right. There you go. Next slide. So, this is a rendering that actually our marketing program is going to start on September 4th. We'll have a website. And frankly, I don't remember the name of the website, but once I know it, I'll give it to Sam and Maria so they can share it with you. But you can see the south building, the east building, the parking structure that's behind it. And then going north, you can see the Moose Toy building with kind of the rainbow on it, and then the hotel. So, these last two projects, and I'm going to show you a couple of photos of the hotel also, but come September 2019, Campus El Segundo will be 100% complete. Next slide. Again, these are the same basic renderings that Maria showed you, but the Alta, it's called Alta Facina. That's the name of the project. And the picture on the left is on Nash. And then the picture on the right is the intersection of Campus Drive and Campus Square West. Next. These are some of the balconies and how people will be using them. And actually, these balconies do overlook the soccer fields. Some are inward to the building and the other ones are. And basically, none of them extend beyond the patios, by the way. And the patios extend about nine and a half feet. There's a 15-foot setback. You know, we have five-foot of sidewalk, obviously. And then there's like a foot before the patios end, and the balconies are inbound about a foot from that. And this is actually the interior courtyard, which isn't really related to, you know, what we're asking for approval today. But it shows the space between the buildings and the parking structure. And again, I call it just the vertical Elavan. So, we have four fire pits in there. There's seating areas and it's a people, you know, people can gather. We have some really nice signage. Each suite will have a sign on it. And, you know, it's, and there's bridges. I don't know if you knew that. There's bridges that connect from the second floor and on the fourth floor. The idea is you can drive up and park on the second floor, walk across the bridge to your front door. So, it's way different than like a Pacific Corporate Towers, where you're going up an elevator, down an elevator, in a common corridor. Here, it's all access from the outside. And I think, now we'll go to the hotel. So, if you've driven by there lately, actually, the hotel will be topped off September 15th, more or less. So, right now, you see the fifth floor. There's actually one more floor on top of that. And they should be done framing with that, like I said, middle of September. And that is hopefully be open by April 1st next year. And the model rooms, next slide. We actually had a tour with Marriott today. They require it with, you have to build two model rooms so they can come and inspect every light switch, every this, every that. That inspection was actually this afternoon at 2:00, and it went extremely well. So, we have a double queen room, and the next slide is a king room.
And these are at the hotel site?
They're at the hotel site.
Wow.
Yeah, we put bitch-ethene on top of the ceiling in case it rains. And actually, the doors do lock now. And what I was going to suggest, that if anyone wants to tour the hotel site, I would say come mid-September, you know, please contact me or Maria or Sam and we'll happen to bring it through there. And you'll be able to actually walk, it's good on the next slide. You'd actually be able to walk on the rooftop deck where the bar is going to be. And that's kind of the first one in El Segundo. So, we're all pretty excited about that. And next slide is just a night view of the same thing. So, again, you can see the EVA in the background, the Moose Toys building there. So, like I said, we'd be more than happy to walk you through it. In fact, we've asked the Lakers if they wanted to go by and all the other neighbors to go see it. And that's really the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any of the balconies, will they be enclosed? If it's an enclosed, it's not a balcony or is it a balcony?
It's a bay window.
I mean, is a balcony not a balcony?
Yeah, they're not enclosed. Basically, the ones that are inside are inside about five feet, I think. So, the sliding doors are on the inside of the building. And then you go in the balcony, but it's within the drip line, which would not have encroached. So, we're only asking for approval for the ones that go beyond the drip line of the building.
And these are for-sale office condominiums?
That's correct.
Is that the use?
Yeah. So, we have 150,000 square feet in the building. EVA will occupy anywhere from 40,000 to 60,000 square feet. And then we have basically the difference anywhere between 90,000 to 110,000 for sale. Again, the marketing program will start right after Labor Day, but without marketing it. We have four units under let-in intent right now. Both El Segundo people, actually Moose is expanding into one of them. Another's the local attorney that's looking for three of them. And then we have interest in another four units from, again, local El Segundo businesses. So, it gives local businesses an opportunity to buy something.
Right.
Where, again, the global marketplace and all the other projects, you see 555, 777, you know, Insight is all for lease. So, we provide a special product that, you know, people can buy. And if you're a small business, you get to grow and have equity and stuff like that. And as you know, the Edge and Elavan were both very successful with that model.
And I'm sorry, how many units are in?
There's 37 condominium units that are being approved, that were approved in the track map, I don't know, a year ago, in December. So...
And they range in what footage?
2,500 to like 5,000. I mean, the EVA ones are separate. There are two floors of 20,000 square foot each. So, they're separate, but the buyer is buying anywhere from 2,500 and multiples thereof.
Does every unit get a balcony or is it kind of mixed?
Every unit has a balcony or a patio. Yeah, that was real important to give everybody the indoor/outdoor feel.
Well, this is a great way to end this project. I mean, every phase has really been phenomenal. And it looks like every time you come, you kind of up the game a little bit.
We try.
And happy to have EVA Airlines have their headquarters here in El Segundo. And let me plug, if you look up on that satellite image, all that dirt there.
Yeah.
That's what we're talking about. But those two soccer fields, you know, in case you don't know, there is a sponsorship opportunity there. Every plane that lands can look at the EVA soccer fields.
Big logo.
Every time the Lakers show the Laker Center, you're going to get free advertising. So, think about that. We're very happy to have you. It's a beautiful project.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
Any other comments? No? All right. Well, seeing no one else, I'll close public communication. Further comments will come from the dais.
Tremendous project. This is a project that was going to be all EVA's and then...
Yeah, they're going to dormitory.
Exactly.
And they changed it to be condos.
Exactly, downsize, yeah.
But we still get the corporate headquarters, which is nice.
Very nice, very nice. No, I don't have any issues. I think it looks very clean to me.
Yeah, I think balconies absolutely add to the look of that elevation. You know, it's a beautiful building and it definitely, having some modulation helps a lot. So, I'm all for it.
Yeah, another great project. Should be very proud. Okay, are there any further comments? I'll accept a motion.
I will. What will I do? I will move to approve.
Yeah, I got it.
An ordinance, amending the corporate campus specific plan development standards to allow balconies to project into the required front yard setbacks.
All right, there's a motion. We have a second?
I'll second.
And I'm sorry, just to interject, the motion is actually for the reso, recommending the council approve the ordinance.
Approve the reso, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you. So, you're approving a reso, not an ordinance, but...
Sorry.
The motion stands.
Thank you.
The second stands.
And again, the motion is 10 feet in the setbacks, not just the front yard setbacks, which is what it says.
Oh, right. Thank you.
That's all right. Okay, we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, approved. Thank you all. All right, our next item, I understand, the new structure within the downtown plan, we're being asked to continue that to September 13th? All right, I'll make a motion to continue Item H6 to our meeting on September 13th.
I'll move for that.
There's a motion. Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That brings us to continued business. None? Report from Building Plan and Safety Director.
Yes, I just wanted to report on one matter, one important matter. And I wanted to thank Chairman Baldino for coming and staying late for the council meeting. The Smoky Hollow Plan, council asked some clarification on a few items. And they asked us to bring back some additional information. So, the item's been continued to September 18th. I just wanted to, I know all the hard work that staff did, especially Paul Samaras and Tina Gall spent tremendous amount of time, probably about two and a half years. And all the hard work and decisions at the Planning Commission and through all the workshops and whatnot. So, we'll keep you posted on the progress, but I just wanted to update you tonight.
Can you give us an update on specifics, what needs to be further developed?
Yeah, they asked for additional clarification on the height issue. They were concerned about the 50 feet. As you may know, the code would allow by right 35 feet, as it is today. We thought that in some unique cases, we thought there'd be an opportunity to allow the height up to 50 feet with the public benefit. And we mentioned that in some cases in today's code, if you consolidate the lots and on the east side of town, it's already allowed to be 50 feet. No one has taken us upon that offer, but they asked for some clarification. I think they probably also want to see visually what a 50-foot building would look like in Smoky Hollow. So, we'll do that. We'll get ready to do that. The second item was, they were concerned about parking on El Segundo. We told them that in order to get additional parking on El Segundo, we're going to have to move some of the lanes, three of the lanes closer together. So, we mentioned that in traffic engineering, when lanes get smaller, it has a tendency to slow down traffic. Along with having parking on El Segundo, we felt would slow down traffic. We also said that it may be a good idea to start some, start small with some, maybe a block or two, just to see how it goes. But they wanted some additional information, maybe some sightlines of what a car would see if they were doing a right turn or left turn coming out of Smoky Hollow. So, we're getting prepared to show things, visualize how that's going to work and whatnot. And the third item was, they asked some questions about the multifamily overlay zone. Exactly the same thing that came up during the Planning Commission. And we mentioned that, the Planning Commission asked the same questions. We have some ideas on how we could, we're already thinking about some solutions for that. So, I think there wasn't anything that stopped us. I think we're, we'll be ready. We have a month to prepare. And we're hopeful that it'll be approved on September 18th. Thank you.
And Sam, if any of those items don't pass, how does that affect the overall plan?
Well, it, it doesn't. I mean, if, it depends on which item, but we could still proceed with an amended plan, such as, I'll say, I'll just pick out one of them and say if, if for whatever reason, the community feels, council feels, that it really is not a good idea to provide parking on El Segundo, the plan could go forward without that. What it would mean is it'll impact the INU fee, because the INU fee is based on overall cost. And it'll have some impact on the amount that we collect, how many we collect will have an impact. But the specific plan could proceed.
And you could approve the plan as it is and later decide not to do parking on El Segundo Boulevard?
You could do that as well.
You just have to collect less INU fees because you're not going to use those funds.
You could do that as well.
But you could approve this plan and later decide, hey, we don't want parking El Segundo, you don't have to spend the money for it.
Exactly.
And I mean, if you look at the downtown parking in lieu, how many years did it take? And before Rock and Brew showed up, there wasn't even any money to do anything.
A lot of it.
Before we even got the one, you know, two-block improvements of the parking. So, even if we approved this, I'm not going to hold my breath. Anything's going to happen overnight.
Yeah.
But I do, again, want to thank staff. I mean, it's been a long road and just a tremendous amount of community involvement and stakeholder input was put into this plan. So, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And a question, and maybe this is for Mr. King. If, as you pointed out, Sam, we did invest a lot of time, not nearly as much as you guys have and as staff has done. But, you know, there's, we gave a lot of thought to the recommendations that we put for to council. And if we were to come back, if I were to come back in front of council and make a statement, and I can do that as a private citizen, but not as, not representing Planning Commission, is that correct?
Absolutely. Any of you can speak on your personal behalf. Obviously, it's very different if you're representing the commission as a whole. So, you know, what I would recommend is if you're going to do something like that, that you speak with your colleagues at a meeting and get their support and consent, if you're going to speak on behalf of the body.
Got you. And in case you didn't watch the four-hour meeting, my comments were basically summarizing the issues that we discussed, the overlay, trying to explain the height issue, because I knew that was an issue. And then basically just, again, compliments